Get my teacher voice on. Roll call, Mr. Bailey, Mrs. Dean, Mrs. Martin, Ms. Miller. Mrs. Morris is absent. Mr. Osowski. The chair is here. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. President's remarks. As per usual, please place all cell phones on silent. I would also like to say Valentine's Day is just a couple days away, so happy Valentine's Day. If you don't have a valentine, you can be mine. I have one, but I need extras. And I don't know if y'all watched the Super Bowl last night, but the right team won. And Reba McEntire slayed it when she did. She did the National Anthem. Anyway, I think that's all I have. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda of the February 12th, 2024 regular meeting as presented? Moved by Mr. Osowski. Is there support? Support by Mr. Bailey. Is there any discussion? Harry Nunn, all in favor, say yes. Opposed? Motion carries. Call to the audience, public participation regarding agenda items. Y'all like need to talk to us about the agenda? No, thanks. Raise your hands if you do. All right. Moving on.
Our first, for our first presentation this evening, Ms. Comillion unfortunately was unable to make it this evening due to an illness. She did attend the most recent Parent Advisory Committee meeting and had indicated her plans to be here tonight, but she was unable to join us due to an unanticipated illness. So we will work to get that included on a future agenda.
All right. Alyssa?
Good evening, everyone. So today I would like to highlight Lean Crew SAT Art and Sports. So this week is really busy with the Lean Crew. Lean Crew is working with the PBIS to work together and put together and send out Valentine's, Valentine Candygrams. This Wednesday and every Wednesday until the end of the school year, the Lean Crew will meet with their ninth grade mentees to talk about various topics such as how to transition to the secondary campus, how to stay out of drama, and how to deal with homework. At the end of the month, Thursday, February 29th, Lean Crew will be holding an event for the ninth grade to play an assortment of video games like Xbox, Nintendo Switch, and many more. The SAT is coming up, and later this month, the 10th and 11th, 11th grade will be taking the PSAT and the SAT. And the following month, the school is offering preparatory classes to boost your SAT and PSAT score. If the student attends all eight of these preparatory classes, they will win a trip to Cedar Point along with the other art. In Plymouth, in Plymouth, the Plymouth Coffee Bean, students artwork from this school and many other schools will be displayed until March 30th, 2024. And sports. The swim leagues are, is this Friday at 5:00 PM at Crestwood. Basketball is the 13th and the 16th. Freshmen will be playing at 4:00 PM at Redford Union, JV 5:30, and varsity at 7:00 PM. Majorettes is also starting to recruit people for the upcoming year. Their official tryout times will be February 22nd, 3:00 to 5:00 PM.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Jezwick. This art, is this, you say it's multiple schools, is this under an invitation of some sort or what? You know?
No, I don't know. All I know is that it's other artists. I believe that the Coffee Bean Shop like allows other artists from like the city just to put their art there.
So the library, the Redford Library is under construction right now, and I'm pretty sure they still have an open invitation for the schools interested in displaying artwork or essays or whatever. That's a possibility for you.
Okay.
Nobody's taking advantage of it, and I don't understand why this is our community and this is a chance to show off our outfits, but that could be a consideration if you pass it up line. Thank you.
One question. Has the high graders been over to the high school and had the chance to like come in and see the school?
No, not yet. We have planned for around April just to kind of start showing them the ropes and how the school works. So that's still a progress, but we're hoping around April. Of course.
Any other questions? All right. Moving on. Super Tech Communication, Mr. Whit.
So this evening, we do want to start off by recognizing our staff members of the month for February 2024, based on their nominations during the month of January. Starting off at Keeler in the admin wing, we have Jessica Miller, our Coordinator for Social Emotional Learning and Student Wellness. Back center, we have Katie Deegan, one of our audiologists. At Beach Elementary School, we have Alyssa Stokes in the DHH program, a teacher in that program. Hilbert Elementary School, we have Stacy Pace, Lead Special Education Teacher. In the day treatment program, we have Ann Holland, Educational Assistant. At the junior high school, we have Raymond Brown, Lead Special Education Teacher. And at the high school, we have Margaret Burkle, our art teacher. So congratulations to those staff members of the month for their efforts on behalf of our students and staff. Next up, we have the February 2024 Board Brag Book, which you have in front of you, and ultimately will be included online. So some of the highlights there, starting at Beach Elementary School. After-school clubs and tutoring began during the month of January. Those clubs that are being offered include arts, acting, yearbook, cooking, a board game club, and SEL club. In addition to that, after-school tutoring is being run two days per week. And right now, we have there 80 students participating in those previously mentioned clubs, one or the other, or probably potentially multiple clubs in some cases, and then 90 students participating in the after-school tutoring. And again, for those tutoring, after-school tutoring, those students are used, are identified using those NWEA criteria and classroom data as students needing support outside of the classroom and intervention blocks that are built into the school day. So a lot of students participating in those after-school activities, which is always great to see. Also at Beach Elementary, Beach hosted their first student panel for students in grades three through six. Those students had the opportunity to share their voice in a safe and welcoming environment about a multitude of issues ranging from culture to safety and care at Beach. This was the first of what will be an ongoing effort for those student panels. Also hosted at Beach Session Three of our Parent University Program, and the focus of that session was on supporting students' healing and growth. And that is described there along with some photos from that parent session. Next up, we move along to Hilbert Elementary School. The Students of the Month for January were recognized, and each month, the teachers nominate a student from their own class who show positive characteristics of outstanding citizenship. So those students and their Student of the Month Board is included there. Also at Hilbert, they wanted to highlight their efforts with their Reading Buddies Program, where our older students partner with younger students to read together. And Mrs. Chartier's sixth grade class and Mrs. Faulkner's second grade class met last week to begin their partnership, and there's some photos there of that effort. It's always great to see our students supporting our, our older students supporting our younger students through efforts such as that. Also highlighting at Hilbert Elementary School, the PBIS Council. Picture there is one of our SEL specialists, Allison Hubert. And that PBS Council is comprised of students in grades kindergarten through sixth grade. Council meets once a month to coordinate opportunities to engage students in schoolwide activities. And in the month of January, they sponsor the Candygram Sale. Next up, we have the junior high school. A lot going on at the junior high. They wrapped up the first semester, as they did also at the high school, and Semester Two is now well underway. The counseling team has been working to meet with students who did not have a successful first semester in one form or another. They also celebrated those counselors during the week of February 5th, which was National Counselor Appreciation Week. So kudos to our counselors across the district. And I know the district highlighted that with the social media posts and some other things were done at the building levels as well to recognize those counselors. And also, they highlighted celebrating students, the most improved students for the first semester by taking them to a field trip in partnership with the Motor City Cruise and the Detroit Pistons. And so kudos to those students who showed improvement throughout the first semester and ultimately got to participate in that activity. Next up at the junior high school, there's photos there of their ongoing efforts throughout this school year to bring in engaging speakers and opportunities for our students. The focus is on negative and positive consequences of decision-making. Each session has a key word, and last week's word was empathy. Students had discussions and role-play scenarios. They also had a guest speaker come in to speak to all of our seventh through ninth grade boys last week, and that's, there's some pictures of that there from the auditorium. The speaker was part of a juvenile release program and came out to speak to our students about the importance of education and how being successful academically truly changes your trajectory in life. So there's photos there from that program. So kudos to our junior high staff for working to set that up. And also now highlighting the high school, we wanted to highlight our students who are part of Detroit Regional Dollars for Scholars Program and highlight one of the events that they had the opportunity to participate in, Project Runway, which was hosted at Eastern Michigan University. Our students within the Dollars for Scholars Program along with their counterparts from, I believe it's a total of 15 other districts. I think we're 16 districts in total in that program. In total, those 160 next-level scholars had an opportunity to gather at EM, Eastern Michigan for leadership and networking training, a campus tour, a program alumni question-and-answer panel, and more. And they also had the students to visit the University of Michigan for a full campus and academic programming tour. So there's pictures of the larger group and our smaller Redford Union representatives from that event. Next up, we wanted to highlight the efforts of four of our student athletes. Wait, I'm seeing five.
You're right.
So we're gonna recognize, we're gonna recognize five student athletes on their commitments to play college football at the next level in the Winter National Signing Day. Those students are all indicated there and included there. Demathew Dixon, Parker Kennedy, Mike Miles, Jakari Lewis, and Elijah Triplet. And they all, just last week, had the opportunity to sign their letters of intent to play football at the indicated schools there. So kudos to those young men on taking that next step. Also at the high school, we wanted to highlight two students, Alexander Vasquez and Kane Hester, who took the time to write to the President of the United States. And there are both students pictured there along with a response that they received to their letter. Kind of curious to know what they wrote the President about, so maybe I'll stop by the high school and see if I can find that out. Redford Union High School, also, four of our students were chosen to participate in the Wayne State University Honors Band. So those students are pictured there. They had the opportunity to work with college professors, future music educators, and students from 31 other metro Detroit area schools. And that program is highlighted there. So congratulations to Reba Atkins, Luria Smiley, Owen Bloom, and Rayanna Erby. There's some pictures there from their program at Wayne State. And next up, we want to highlight our Veritas Program right in this wing of the building here at McGowan, and recognize those students who made the honor roll for the first semester. Those students are natural leaders within the Veritas Program and have helped a lot to help any new students as they become acclimated to the Veritas Program. Damarian Amber, Delia Bradley, Zaria Calvin, Maya Echols, Amaya Hannan, Radisha Hill, Sheri Jones King, Camden Moore, Jacob Owensby, and Cortez Taylor. So congratulations to those students in making the honor roll. So day treatment program, and this is what the day treatment program's all about, and it doesn't happen for every single student. There are students who remain throughout their whole educational experience in the day treatment program, which is fine too, but it's always great to recognize the success of seven students in this case who were successfully mainstreamed back to their resident districts from that day treatment program.
Yes.
So kudos to those students. As, as Ms. Dillard and I have discussed, and Ms. Stern, and I know our administrative team, we believe strongly in the least restrictive environment. We also want our kids to be in an environment that they can be successful in. So it's always nice to celebrate it when we have students who can move from that day treatment program. That is a great program for our kids, but anytime we have the opportunity to successfully move those students back to those resident districts, it's a reason to celebrate. And then also, as is always the case, almost as soon as those seven students left, there were seven more students to take their place within that program that needed those services that they provide. So kudos to the efforts of the day treatment staff, not only in helping students move back to their home district, but also in welcoming new students into the day treatment program. And then also, within our ACT 18 ASD Program, there's a description there and then a number of different photos that highlight a field trip that they had the ability to take to Friendship Circles Weinberg, Weinberg Village in West Bloomfield to practice life skills that they have been learning. So that was a great opportunity, and there's a lot of pictures there showing some of the life skills that the students were able to engage in by going out to the Weinberg Village in West Bloomfield and put some of their skills that they're being taught into practice there. So congratulations, and it's great to see those highlights of the students and the different activities that that center enables students to engage in. And then I'm gonna actually let Ms. Knackman talk about the very last page there when we get to the HR update. But we have an example right here in this room, and I'll let her update the Board of Education on that effort to recognize our staff and their efforts throughout each school day. Next up, we do have our calendar of events, and that, again, will be included there. It's by building different events between February 13th to March 29th. And we'll get that edited because I think we threw an extra vol in February. So we'll, we'll take care of that, get this cleaned up and posted, but all those events are included there. And it's not Jackie's fault. I need to be a better proofreader, so. So we'll get that information out and posted, both the brag book and this calendar of events. And thank you again to our student representative, as always, for updating us on the things that are taking place at the high school as well, in addition to some of the things that are included in this calendar of events.
Thank you.
Is there a tutoring program at the high school after school?
Is there a what?
A tutoring program at the high school after school?
There is a program, after-school tutoring. There's also tutoring that's taking place during the school day itself.
Moving on. Communications received by the Board Secretary. Chief Financial Officers, communications, Mr. Belting. You get two minutes. No, I'm kidding.
Should be good. Currently working on the mid-year budget, and a lot of the mid-year budget also as well, setting up the final budget as well. A lot of legwork there. Just trying to get the grants lined up and the headcount aligned with that. So that's the, been the majority of our time.
And just of note, one of those things on the calendar of events that ties directly into that, of course, is our second student count day of the year, which is on Wednesday. So hopefully the kids are excited about coming to school on Valentine's Day.
They're excited about coming to school. Right.
It's outstanding to hear.
Executive Director of Human Resources and Labor Relations Communications, Mrs. Knackman.
Hello. As Mr. Whit indicated, I'm just going to highlight the candy corner over here. As you know, many of us in the room attend different conferences and workshops, and we always like to bring things back. And at a conference that Ms. Crenshaw and Mr. Whit attended earlier in the fall, they learned about another district that was doing something similar. And Mr. Whit brought this back and said he'd really like to have just a fun treat for all of the buildings, for the staff to enjoy. for all of the buildings, for the staff to enjoy, and to say thank you for all they do. And when people have a rough day, go grab a piece of candy, or just when you have a sweet tooth. So, he asked Amanda Maribel, our Human Resource Coordinator, and the wonderful Jackie Warren to put these candy corners together in every building. And although it looks simple, it's been time-consuming to get everything ordered and distributed into the lounges and set up and the lights and all of that. And the intention, by the looks of the candy drawers in the HR office, is that we will keep restocking and refilling these in each of the buildings. I believe there are still two buildings left that, is that right, Jackie? That they need to get to, and, but I think that is what, the bus garage and I think? And Beck, okay. So, all of the buildings, the school buildings have been set up, and it seems like the teachers are really enjoying it because I know there are two places that already have to be refilled, and I think it's already been in place. It's only been in place for like two weeks. But it was a really nice idea that Mr. Witt had, and I know it's those little things that people appreciate daily. So, that's that. We did not purchase chocolate because it melts. So, we purchased hard candies and licorice and that sort of thing because chocolate just doesn't hold up well in our buildings. And it's very expensive.
Executive Director of Cortical and Technology Communications, Ms. Crenshaw.
This is her last day in the Florida sunshine.
Oh, she's something more.
Yes.
All right, moving on to, I welcome you those fast access. To our consent agenda, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Moved by Ms. Rosowski, is it support? Certainly discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say yes. Opposed, motion carries. We are moving on to our action items. So, special consideration, non-consent agenda item, action items.
Michigan Association of School Boards 2024 election. So, I hope that you all, before I go too far, took the time to read all three of our resumes, the candidates' resumes. I recent, last week, I was able to attend a candidate forum with Oakland County School Board Association and answer some really tough questions. It's like, woo, I was not prepared for that. But what a wonderful opportunity to just go out into a neighboring county and meet some school board members doing it, just like we are. So, having said that, can I get a motion by the Board of Education? I need, yeah, so I need a motion for the candidate that we would like to elect. Okay, so, it is moved by Ms. Miller, seconded by Mr. Bailey to appoint or vote on behalf of Evelyn Pridey Moore, Redford Union School District 18. All in favor, oh no, I gotta roll call it, by a majority of, no, wait, okay. Yeah, okay, yes, there is, hold on. I'm trying to read how this is. Right, okay, so we have a motion from Ms. Miller, seconded by Mr. Bailey. We will go to discussion. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I didn't know that we had to, like, as a board, like, vote. I thought it was like an independent thing, so that was surprising to me.
Yeah, so, and that is one of the things that I said in the candidate forum, was they ask, one of the questions was, how can MASB improve? And I said, you know what, I don't know that we do, MASB does a great job of communicating things like this to local boards, right? So, yeah, we do have to pick someone. And there have been years where we have chosen to not send a name because we didn't know anything about the candidates in front of us, which is another thing that MASB could improve on. So, that is, that is the next step, is that. And so, every district within Region Eight has to, at their February board meeting, has to pick myself, Ms. McQuiston, or Ms. Heinz. And then, that is sent off to MASB, and they count those, and whoever has the most votes is elected.
So, when you went to your form, was your form, was like, form invite was open to the public? How was that taken out?
That was an Oakland County Association of School Boards, much like Wayne County Association of School Boards, invitation from their board president to all three candidates to come and speak at their meeting, in which they ask us very pointed questions about what we have done, what we, what we think we can improve, what, what's our heart? I mean, like, one of them was, just tell us, you know, your heart around this. There were actually fourteen questions, and I would tell you, some of them were really hard to answer. Some of them were easy, and some of them not so much. So, it was something that Oakland County Association of School Boards chose to do for their Oakland County School Board members. I did say, what a great idea, and I will bring that back to my Wayne County Association of School Board of Directors, because, like I said so many times, we get these names, and we don't know who these people are, right? And so, going forward, I hope to change that in Wayne County as a Board of Directors member with Wayne County Association of School Boards. You're welcome. Certainly further discussion. Okay, so the motion is to nominate, to cast our votes on my behalf. And then this requires a roll call vote, Mr. Bailey? Mrs. Dean? Mrs. Martin? Ms. Miller? Mr. Rosowski? The chair votes yes. So, six, yeah, for Evelyn, and then six, zero, zero. I'm just writing some notes here, sorry. I will also say, having met the incumbent, very good McQuiston, she is pretty impressive. And if she is re-elected, I will be asking her to come. One of the things she said is she likes to come to speak to local boards. And I would love to have her come and tell us how we, we help, how do we get involved with Michigan Association of School Boards? And what is, there's so much out there that they do for us that I think a lot of people don't know about.
She is a good board member, but she's, I think you cast your vote in the right place.
Yeah, she happens.
She happens to be my board member.
I told her that, when I was talking to her, that our superintendent, she's from Lake Orion School District. So, I went deep into enemy territory. It was like, Oakland County's offices are way down Telegraph, like Telegraph and, I don't even know. It's in Waterford. I had to go to like, yeah, it was like, I was driving down Telegraph for a long time. So, it was a wonderful opportunity just to meet some other board members. There were no items removed from the consent agenda. Call to the audience, public participation regarding non-agenda items. All right, hearing none, Superintendent's remarks.
So, I do have a, some remarks in the way of a short presentation. And this was something that I knew was in the works, but I didn't know the specific timing of this until Friday. So, that's why it wasn't included as a formal agenda item. But I understand that at the Wayne County School Board Association meeting later this week, I think it's on the fifteenth.
Yep, it's Thursday.
They are planning to present this same information, so I wanted to be sure to present it to our board this evening. It is something that those who have been on the board will be familiar with. And this is with regards to the regional enhancement millage. But in particular, the renewal that the intent right now is to go through a process to have that renewal be on the November fifth ballot. And that is in part because this is an election that can only take place in even years. And as I go through the presentation, you'll see why, at least initially, the push is to work through the process that's outlined in here to have this on the ballot for November fifth, 2024. I'm not gonna read the whole thing, I'm just gonna try to hit the highlights. And then if we need to have a future discussion about this, we can include that on a workshop. And then ultimately, as you'll see at some point here coming up, this issue will be brought back to a regular board meeting because the board is gonna be asked to act upon this question. So, the regional enhancement millage provides all of our districts in Wayne County with additional operating revenues. For enhancement millage to be placed on a ballot, the Board of Education for school districts representing a majority of the students within a region pursuing one of these enhancement millages must pass identical resolution asking for RISA to pursue an enhancement millage. The regional enhancement millage must be proposed countywide, and then it passes or fails on a countywide basis. Each school board must decide if they wish to place the millage on the ballot, and if enough school districts vote yes. So, at least fifty percent, representing more than fifty percent of the students countywide, then the initiative is placed on the ballot. If the voters pass the millage, the ISD, or in our case, RISA, collects and then distributes the money equally to all constituent school districts on a per-student basis. RISA does not receive any funding through this regional enhancement millage. And again, this is something that we already have in place. But it is something that expires, so that's why they're looking at a renewal election. Each district, and while there are some limitations as to this expenditure of these funds, but each district controls how they spend their enhancement millage money. Local districts first became eligible to receive enhancement millage funding after the millage was first passed in 2016. And then because of some changes in the law, public school academies are also now eligible to receive enhancement millage funding. So, now we have to, little less coming to us because public school academies are also recipients of these funds within Wayne County. There's a description there on the next slide of the regional enhancement millage for Wayne County. And again, as long as, the discretion is, as long as it can fall into one of those categories that are indicated there in the listing to the right of the chart, you, the local district has the ability to determine how to spend those funds, so that ranges all the way from reducing class sizes up at the top to also renovating and maintaining facilities as the allowable purposes. So, there is a current millage in place between 2022 and 2028. But here's the thing, that, why we're looking at, through Wayne RISA, why they're talking about this issue is because that current millage will expire at the end of the 2027-2028 school year. And as I mentioned before, while 2024 seems early to be going out for a renewal, one of the challenges is, a couple things, and I'm not even gonna hit on most of the remaining slides. But here's the challenge, is the election has to take place in an even year. So, for it to be a renewal, that means we have the 2024 November election, and we have potentially the November 2026 election. If we were to wait all the way to November of 2028, it no longer would be a renewal. If the other, if the millage expires, which it's set to do in the 27-28 school year at the end, then you can no longer go to the voters and say, this is a renewal of a millage. At that point, would be a new millage. So, understanding that the elections have to take place in even years, there's two potential bites at the apple to have this enhancement millage, which not only our district, but all districts in Wayne County have come to rely upon this funding. And it's a significant amount of money when you look at it on a countywide basis. So, the reason they're looking at putting this on the ballot for later in November and going through that process is because they don't want to be in a position where they have this millage sunset, which it will do at the end of the 27-28 school year, and then have to sell voters on a new millage. It's always typically easier to sell people on a renewal of an existing amount that they've already been paying in their tax bill. The proposal approximately costs homeowners, and the renewal will as well, on a home value of $100,000. The impact of the renewal is $8 per month. But what that generates into for districts is approximately $360 per student. And that $360 per student can go a long way. And again, all of our districts throughout Wayne County have, since this has been in place since 2016, have come to rely upon these, these funds. So, I will go over one more, there's a timeline in there on the 2024 enhancement millage renewal. The ask of this board later in May, sometime between May first and July sixteenth. And we can, again, have discussion a little bit today, if there's immediate questions or at a future board workshop. But between May first and July sixteenth of this year, the board would need to adopt a resolution or consider a resolution on whether this issue should be put on the ballot. And then again, each Board of Education throughout Wayne County is gonna be asked to do the same thing. And then depending on the outcome there, the rest of the timeline falls from there leading up to that November fifth, 2024 election. So, the timeline is kind of prescribed based on that November fifth election date, and it works back from there. And so, again, understanding that at the Wayne County School Board Association meeting on Thursday of this week, they're gonna be covering this topic. And I knew at a minimum, Mrs. Pridey Moore is probably planning to attend that meeting. And I wanted to make sure that everybody on our board was aware of this process. And with the understanding that sometime between May and July, this topic will be coming back to the board for its consideration. And that's all I had.
Thank you. Moving on, Board of Education Communication and Discussion. So, I will go first, and I will reiterate that this Thursday at 6:00 PM is the Wayne County Association of School Boards meeting. They do actually provide dinner at 5:30, it's at Wayne RISA, which is down, down the ways a little bit. You should have in your district email, an email from Darling Pompano, our Wayne County Association of School Board president. I know that there, we usually get a legislative update. I know from having been in Oakland County the other night, one of the things that they got was what the proposed budget is in Lansing. And I'll just tell you that the proposed student increase does not match inflation. It's about two and a half percent, and we know inflation's at more than four. So, we definitely need this extra money from our Wayne County millage because while we will probably get a student increase, certainly isn't gonna cover what it's costing anymore. will probably get a student increase, certainly isn't going to cover what it's costing anymore. So I encourage you to come out to the Wayne County meeting, there's always a lot of good information. I know there's going to be some presentation from some Wayne County members who were able to go to Washington DC and attend a national convention there. And it's just great, it's a great networking opportunity. So having said that, is there any further board communication? Mr. Bailey?
So last week, or last meeting, we had discussed about Sex Education Advisory Board. And I wanted to take this opportunity to point out some things. Under a publication from the Michigan Department of Education called Sex Education Advisory Board, the only asked question is, it says it's a mandate for an advisory board if sex education is offered. This is rementioned within the law itself, I gave that each board member on the front, it's in green, at the bottom of the first page. The school district shall not offer this instruction unless the Sex Education Advisory Board stands by the Board of the school district. Now, on the first page, that green line shows the composition of the board and how it's structured. On the second page, it says the Board of a school district showing two people, the school district educators, local clergy, and community health professionals on the Sex Education Advisory Board. So to assist Ms. Crenshaw, we had a discussion after she mentioned about the support. So what I did is I contacted the local clergy within Redford Union. Again, Redford Township's 11225 Square Mile, and Redford Union's only part of that. So the possibilities are beyond what I, what I did. I contacted each of the churches, I gave them a copy of the law, I asked them if they would be interested if the offer was presented to them. There was, many of them asked for more information. One in particular said yes right off the bat, Dallas from Grace Lutheran Church, and that's Pastor Hilda. And there's some churches that said that they couldn't participate, like, coming from a community church, they currently don't have clergy, and Our Lady of Loretta, and St. Val's, because the priest is going to be out of the country. So with the updates, I can give you that information. What I'll also do is, it's going to be harder to find the physician, the community has changed. So physicians are from outside the community, and their roots aren't quite as deep as what they used to be. But there's the physicians and also the nurses, I'll see if I can get some names for you. Also, on second page A, it says subdivision, which means that what the state is requiring does not prohibit a school district from establishing additional program goals and objectives that are not contrary to this section. Coming from the medical field and things I've seen in the past, this is a great opportunity to make survival skills and life skills available to people that I've seen suffer without knowledge. One thing in the first article deals with Larry Nasser. From what I remember, there was 200, 400 young ladies who lined up for the money. But from what I remember, there was just one that pressed the issue that this can be done. And there was another one that came forward, she didn't press quite as hard. Now, we're in a position to change that. If the people have the knowledge upfront, at least we can prepare them. If they decide to do whatever, that's up to them. But there's a court case also where it was published in the paper about a woman was lured into prostitution. Now, again, I think we can provide the, the social means in which they have choices and they can do things in regards to certain situations. The same thing for domestic violence. I read on Facebook where a woman was in a situation after 14 years of abuse. I think information can be given to these people so that they know that there's alternatives. And then it comes down to human trafficking. Again, it would go with lured and other situations. But again, I think we can teach them defensive techniques in which to be aware upfront what to look for. Now, that's that. From the medical point, I think what we can do is save lives and give them information in terms of consequences. With the STDs, I don't know if they mentioned about scarring, like, sterile because of it. The, the, it's not quite sex education, but deals with gender, is breast cancers, testicular cancers, things of that nature in which that information can be passed on to these people to have some sort of awareness. Also, what I'd like to do is advocate the idea that, I don't, I don't know how this is going to be set up, but from what I've seen, there's information that would be appropriate for an all-female class, information for an all-male class, and then coed class. If it's, in a coed class, certain presented, certain information presented, I don't think it would take, get the same seriousness, it'd be more of a joke. So I'd like to close that idea.
So, thank you, Mr. Bailey. I believe, if I recall Mr. Norton's presentation, we have an advisory committee in place, including a health professional because we have a school nurse, right?
That's being included in the interview process for hiring a new visitor, so they'll have that expectation already given to them when they are-
So we're working on that committee. I do appreciate, because I know that, you know, he had, Mr. Norton had indicated that we were having trouble getting some clergy, so reaching out to clergy, sometimes if it comes from one of us, maybe they're more likely to do it. I would also believe that our educators and our curriculum know what's appropriate to teach in an all-female classroom, and an all-male classroom, and a coed classroom. And if I recall correctly, the curriculum also addresses quite a few of those issues that you talked about, like, that it's okay to say no, that abstinence is the best thing for you, healthy-wise. These are the results, I mean, there were quite a few subjects that, that curriculum would, is required to teach, so, but-
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I'm not talking about an academic approach, typical academic approach to this, I'm talking about life skills approach. And from what I've seen, that is different. Now, I may be wrong, but I don't believe so. The other thing is, let me advocate, please, take this home and read. What the committee that we had is not reflective of the law.
But it is reflective of the law. We're missing a clergyman, and I believe Mr. Norton also explained that, as long as we have made an effort to include all of those people, that the state will say, if we can show that we've made an effort to include all of those people and have, I mean, we can't go out and twist people's arms to for, serve on this committee. And so there, I'm sure the people in Lansing understand that, we can't go, you know, say, Pastor so-and-so, you must serve on this committee because there's nobody else.
No, but you can ask them.
Correct.
That's the major important thing upfront.
Absolutely, absolutely. But all we can do is ask, and potentially ask again, and ask until we find someone. And if we can't find someone, then we tell the state, we've done, we've got everybody but a clergy member, we just can't get one.
Yeah, this is something that we have discussed internally. I've discussed this with Mr. Norton and Ms. Crenshaw, and we'll continue to follow up on this and to make sure that the composition of the committee is what it needs to be. And in addition to that, we talked about the fact that ultimately, if we do have clergy that are interested, but turns out they can't make the meeting, that we would make sure at a minimum to create opportunities for them to either ask, review the information and potentially ask questions, or even to participate potentially virtually in some of the opportunities we're creating. So thank you, Mr. Bailey, for reminding of, us of this.
Mr. Bailey?
There is a requirement of a public hearing, so whatever we get has to go at two public hearings.
Mr. Bailey?
We will make-
We, Mr. Norton, at my and Ms. Crenshaw's request, has been getting very up to speed on this. I know at the workshop he presented some of that information based on his participation with Wayne RISA, and we will make sure that we follow the process that's outlined by Wayne RISA and the state.
Mrs. Martin?
Um, as we talk about the regular one, I think we had, like, it was ready, Mr. Crenshaw and that they was, like, had suggested, right? That's one of the reasons. Was there any, like, for combination for people with special education or who's getting special education services?
So I don't know that we've actually officially chosen a curriculum yet, because we were just getting that committee reformed with the board member, with a board member. And I would hope that there are accommodations, but I don't know that we've actually, because I'll say this, there has been no recommendation brought to this board for a vote for a curriculum purchase. And so I would assume that means we have not completed our decision-making process. Is that correct, Mr. Norton?
Correct, we haven't-
We have a recommendation, but we haven't.
We haven't purchased anything, so.
So I don't know if we know the answer to that question yet.
So I was wondering if I can cast along some information as to ways to, to education for people with special needs, with, does receive special education?
You can send that information along to me. Thank you.
All right. Is there any further board communication and discussion? All right, hearing none. Future meeting dates, Tuesday, February 27th, board workshop, 5:30 PM, right here, McGowan School District Meeting Room. Monday, March 11th, regular board meeting, 5:30 PM, again, right here at McGowan School in the district meeting room. Tuesday, March 19th, board workshop, 5:30 PM, McGowan School District Meeting Room. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Moved by Mr. Osowski, is there support? Support by Ms. Miller. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say yes. Opposed? Motion carries. The time is 6:33.